At this time, I'd like to direct on this Mr. Peters. Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move that the adjourned executive session will let the record reflect no action was taken.
Move that the executive session be adjourned with no action. Correct.
Correct.
All in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item on agenda is an update on the manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I might have been talking there, but so, as you know, we own that property over there, the interior, and in conjunction with the Hall associates, we were contacted by them and EPA to ask us for permission to do some testing on our site. As you know, they may not know, but Hall and Associates have been in the area for the last three weeks to try to provide some additional testing for EPA so that they can get the move of the district moving forward. So they're testing a number of locations that are outside of the district. This is one where they want to test additional church and some of the other places around here. So I just wanted to let you know that as you saw, they were also on our property doing some testing. We took it up.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Is there anything else that could come through the commission tonight? If not, we have a motion to adjourn. It's approved. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Session's ended. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's right. Thanks for being here. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your, thanks for your time. You're welcome. Hey, Steve, I look very happy. Yeah. What's that?
I'm Roger.
Oh, hey. That's a little strong guy there. Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much. They, now they, oh, yeah, bar not things. Hey, look at him. You don't know who you're talking to. Steve, you, I have just got to go. Oh, that is. Why did we have to have to stop them? Or maybe it was the other way around. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the North Canton City Council meeting Monday at seven, seven PM. Opening prayer, Reverend Sarah Pegg. I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong one. Roger. Roger Foot. I'm sorry about that. Yes, please.
Well, God's word teaches us to pray for all those in authority. So I want to read your scripture and then I want to pray the scripture. So First Timothy two, one through three, the scripture instructs us to, first of all, then, "I urge that in treaties and prayers and petitions and thanksgivings be made on behalf of all men, for kings and all those in authority, so that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all Godliness and dignity. This is good and acceptable in the sight of God as Savior." Let's pray. Father, we thank you tonight, Father, for the city of North Canton and Lord, what it means to you. Father, and all those who live here. Father, we pray for the men and women, Father, in authority, Lord, who dedicated their lives to serve the folks in this city. Father, we thank you for the city council, Lord, the police and fire, rescue, for those who are in the healthcare industry. Father, those who educate our children. Father, for the churches in our city that help provide moral clarity to those in our city. And Father, that all the businesses, Lord, we pray for them, that, Lord, they would prosper. And, Lord, we also pray for the families, Lord, in our city. Father, for fathers and mothers who work hard to provide for their families, for single mothers and single fathers who are trying to make a go of it. Lord, we just lift all these different, what are called the seven pillars of society, to you. And, Father, we pray for them, Lord, as decisions are made here that impact all those areas. Father, we pray that you give this body a spirit of wisdom and revelation in who you are, and you guide them with great wisdom. Father, your word says in Proverbs 14:34 that righteousness exalts a city but sends it disgrace. Lord, let us be a city that honors you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Thursday, please call the roll. Number four.
Present.
Number five.
Here.
Number six.
Here.
Number seven.
Here.
Number eight.
Here.
Number nine.
Here.
Number ten.
Here.
Seven present. All right, thank you very much. Full consideration, a motion and a second to approve that's presented. Special council meeting minutes, January 13th, 2020. Special committee, the whole meeting minutes, January 13th, 2020. Motion approved, as presented. Second? All in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record or for any reminder. You have a five-minute time.
Good evening. Melanie J. Rowe, Freezerweight, Order Street, North Canton, Ohio. This evening, I would like to speak about language, both written and verbal. We all have our distinct styles of communicating, most likely established in our former years. I so enjoy a well-written op-ed where the writer introduces the topic, weaves a narrative to support his or her premise, and finishes with a conclusion. This is usually accomplished in 600 to 700 words. And listening to Milo Angelo, you cite one of her short stories with her distinct cadence is music to the ears. Two weeks ago, in this chamber, the work interim was discussed. The city's position of this term as relating to two employees was, and I quote, "What reduction are we expecting from that person, not serving as clerk or finance, but as the interim? Would we expect them doing 100% of the job? That was not my assertion." Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines the word interim as temporary, short-term, or provisional. Ms. Loretto accepted the finance position knowing it was temporary. Mr. Young, having not gone through the hiring procedure stated in ordinance 51, 2018, is a provisional employee. Richard Dusum, Dusum was the interim president of Walsh University for several months because he understood there was a distinct process in place for hiring the president of the university, and he respected that process. North Canton has a distinct process for hiring a clerk accountant. However, that process has not been followed. To circle back to language and words, during the discussions that occur in this chamber, sometimes there can be a tendency to use too many words. A good friend has an illustration of this tendency, and it is, "The man was asked, 'Could you tell me the correct time?'" And then, responding to that question, he gave the history of watching him.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council?
Larry Tripp, 1127 East Mayfield. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your remarks two weeks ago on citizen relationship within council chambers. I believe your comments at home on your core values regarding communication, respect, and accountability. As such, as said before, I believe most citizens try to use public speaks as a tool to address government representatives, especially council members, on remarks they have made or have not made, or on action taken or not taken by them. Mine often centered on council mannerisms such as preparation, absenteeism, et cetera. Did anyone read Jim Porter's article in the Canton repository website this weekend? A must-read for anyone interested in local government. My take, anyone interested, my take on the article would be, if you open your eyes, you see reality. As I open my eyes and review my criticism and praise of kinds of city council, do I feel justified in what I am doing? I certainly do after reviewing past topics on which I've spoken, with the likes of some council, two of which sit before us tonight, continually paying city health insurance after a solid no vote by the citizens. The installation of a law director-driven form of government. C, the council, after having rejected health insurance, voted themselves a large pay increase to qualify for state employee retirements. Considered an automatic pay increase, continued with state raising the minimum qualification rate. Strained health relations with school officials. Missed deadlines on levy issues causing a special election costing thousands of dollars to the city. Then the city won half in income tax failure for a needed safety center. Meeting skips, preparation and attendance which exists today. Now, if any of the above are signs of good government, I guess I don't know what I'm talking about, and I would apologize for them as topics used in my prior public speaks. My justification for public speaks, even though it takes time, but eventually the facts and truth be, do be realized, and they do come to fact, and they do come forth as evidenced by the last November election. I had a recent email exchanges with council president as to why he bypasses himself from making reports to the city, as other government representatives do. In an email, he asked us some specifics. Per his request, here are about five of them. With the meeting scheduled for February, with no meeting scheduled for February 17th, I've been reminded that by the end of, in the February, this means this council will have, have only two meeting of the whole meetings. No one is working sessions. That's one-sixth of the year. Why is that? B, where was the legislative side of government the past six or seven years prior to late 2018 overseeing the Arrowhead property? C, under the auspices of by entries responsibility, why was administration so rudely blind-timed on the pay increase for certain administrative personnel? One compliment said this should have been handled in executive session. D, who gave the law director responsibility for answering a citizen request for update on the top council clerk position? Perhaps, Mr., the, you can update, perhaps you can entertain your thoughts on the hiring process, as well as present and future job functions. Lastly, on September the 9th, I addressed this council on absenteeism. I was interrupted eight times. As I walked out, I heard a lady say, "Gee, thank God, can we act and revel with comments?" Think she called me a con, a sexist. And you, in one of your emails, says you would defend me on any criticism after I said I was going to continue speaking honoring those who gave their sacrifices.
Thank you, Mayor.
Where were you then?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, if there anyone else wishing to address council?
My honor, remarks from I are in regards to the 52 minutes of discussions held by city council on November 18th, 2019, council and the whole meeting regarding the proposed 25% salary increase for the city's deputy director of administration and development. First, I would like to commend Chairperson Merrick for calling that incisive discussion. City employees need to know they are supported when it comes to fair and equal treatment in their employment. Unfortunately, the record doesn't support any further breaks. What the record does show is the following. First is the fact that the current city administrator, Pat DiOrio, was the city's director of administrative services when he returned to this to serve the city under city administrator Mike Grimes. Council President Peters introduced Mr. DiOrio with that title at a January 23rd, 2017 meeting. Mr. DiOrio never held a position tied with deputy director of any minute, as was presented by Mr. DiOrio and Mayor David, David Elliott at November 18th, 2019 meeting. Mr. DiOrio's position was created under ordinance 82, 2016, which was enacted December 12th, 2016. Catherine Farina does not hold the same title position as did Mr. DiOrio. The position of deputy director of administration and development was created under ordinance number six, 2018, enacted February 12th, 2018. In that same ordinance, the position previously held by Mr. DiOrio was eliminated. Second, Mr. DiOrio compared the 25% $15,000 increase in salary he was asking for Mrs. Farina to the adjustment in salaries he had given to Brian Hill and Mike Battershell two years earlier, and a restructuring of management positions after the employment of Jim Davis was ended. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Hill received a 12.9% salary increase and Mr. Battershell a 14.6% salary increase, with both increases amounting to $10,000 for each. Why has the administration provided misinformation or downplayed the facts to infer that the earlier salary adjustments were on par with the 25% salary increase for Ms. Farina? I would argue that Ms. Farina does not have the same job, same title, same responsibilities as Mr. DiOrio, and thus cannot argue gender discrimination. As I have stated previously, it was quite unsettling to see a high-level management employee argue publicly using unsupported threats of gender discrimination to coerce from council a 25% salary increase while making disheartening remarks about North Canton city government. Ms. Farina made remarks such as, quote, "From my HR background, and when I first joined here, I was very shocked to see the compensation structure there in North Canton." Close, close. She argued that in employee elsewhere, her compensation would be much higher, quote, than the $75,000 cap that is authorized under current legislation. Ms. Farina was first hired by the city for the position of administrative assistants for a salary of $40,000 annually, and July 2018, when she was appointed deputy director of administration and development at a salary of $60,000. The record reveals that Ms. Farina was one of 12 applicants for the position of deputy director. How many people in this room would be disturbed to find out that Ms. Farina, despite being an applicant for that position, was also handling the motion of the position, the collecting of the applications, and the reviewing of the applications? Shortly after the position was filled by Ms. Farina, I contacted each and every applicant and learned that not a single applicant was ever heard, ever hearing back from the city after they applied for the position that was advertised at a cost to taxpayers of $743. Is this an example of Ms. Farina's HR abilities in action? After the discussion on November 18th, it appears that members of council found this 25% salary increase difficult to swallow. Councilmember Foltz summed up everything when he said, quote, "It's about what we can afford. We do have an answer to our constituents." Close, close. If Ms. Farina is so skillful in HR, why did two high-level management employees abruptly resign? If Ms. Farina is so cognizant of women in the workplace, why did the city lose the valuable services of two women employees? Misrepresentation of the facts, threats, and questionable hiring practices at North Canton City Hall are what I take away after analyzing the minutes of the November 18th, 2019 council and the whole meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Does anyone wishing to address council? Does anyone wish to address counsel? No one else? Brad? Okay. Okay. At this time, I need, the motion is second to appoint Deborah Howard to the civil service commission. You guys were copying an email on her background. First of all, for discussion, anyone have any questions regarding this?
Good question. Good choice.
Any other comments or opinions? Motion and a second to appoint Ms. Howard to the civil service commission.
Motion to appoint? Second, Deborah Howard?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. And last, I need a motion and a second to reappoint John Sutt as the council appointment to the community improvement corporation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We thank both of them for their service.
No, good choice.
Okay, on to new business. May I have the motion and a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance one dash twenty?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton behalf of the city of North Canton enter into agreement to participate in Ohio Department of Transportation's cooperative purchase program to contract for purchase of sodium chloride for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one winter season and declaring this an emergency. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, what we have here is our annual purchase program, a proper plan to try to get a quick savings amount, buying in a group off season, so who passes on that emergency. You don't have any questions?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. And the motion is second to suspend those councils for three reads.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Finally, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. May I have the motion and a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance two dash twenty?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file in the director's office, and authorizing the mayor on board to approval to enter into a contract for the resurfacing, repaving, replacement, repair, and preventive maintenance of certain streets and areas and declaring the same an emergency.
Yes, Chairman Fonte?
Yes, so this is our twenty-twenty street resurfacing program. We don't have the list of streets yet. We have, it's roughly going to be six-lane mile, six-lane miles of streets. The engineer's working on the file on this. Hopefully, we'll have it next week, Rob. If we have it by next week, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm having it this week, and what I'd like to do is discuss with a committee meeting next week, so everyone knows what we're going to say now.
So, since we have this on an emergency, do we just want to pass the reading and then do?
We do one reading, or, you know, I wouldn't advertise it even if we're passed by emergency tonight until Thursday the sixth, after next, next month is the Thursday reading. Just wanted maybe trying to get it out on the streets as quickly as we can to get it out early and get better pricing.
Yeah, Doug, why don't we do one reading until we have the list? Okay, that sounds good. So, we want to just pass the first reading?
I'd like to comment that the next, third is committed at all, which means that we wouldn't begin from regular meetings until ten, which would be after the sixth deadline that the engineer would like to have this in the history. So, we're, the list of streets isn't determined for most part, but it's just how many mile and lane miles we can do, and if we'd like to get that out as soon as possible, we all can hash out what streets we ought to do, but it isn't going to really change.
I do have a question to add, because Darren and I had this conversation earlier today. We commissioned a study by Ametrix Associates to.
Say it again.
We commissioned a study by Ametrix Associates, can't remember when that was, to inventory all of those and basically rank them, you know, the best and worst. Are we still working off of that?
That's pretty dated. I think that's twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, so we've done a lot since I've been here and looked at that, but it's just too dated to really look at and better off, just like we have been just assessing each street individually.
I guess another question we had, and maybe a more pointed question was, that assessment by Ametrix Associates, was that only good for a certain period of time? I was on the assumption that they inventoried all of those and ranked all of them, and that I thought we were going to work, work off of that.
Basically, I had to go back and look at that document. Being that old, we assess roads in this part of the country when they, someone gets destroyed a year.
That's a great point, but one of the things was, one of the reasons we did that was kind of to take the politics out of, you know, not let one or two more council members.
Yeah, I'll certainly go back and look at that document, and my guess is we have a lot of the worst streets at that time.
I can't hear. You can't talk at the same time, please.
Go ahead, Rob.
I was just going to say, I believe a lot of the streets that ranked the worst at that time, I would assume in the last eight years have done, including my predecessor myself, but I'll certainly take a look at it.
I think when, maybe, gosh, it was maybe two thousand and fifteen, I feel like we really did look at it, but I feel like we've been so on top of it, I don't think there's been any ward item that's been going on, I mean, the one, whatever streets we've done. We really could refer it to you to say what is needed, and it's somehow worked out that every ward seems to get their allocation, so I don't know.
All right, well, that means we know how many lane miles we're running to pay.
Roughly six.
Okay. To past point, is it, is it truly imperative that we just do, or do you feel that?
No, I prefer, I just think it gives us a working document. I'm not saying it's going to hold true for everything. We might come in with bids lower and even an strings, I just think we always, we're spending this kind of money to put something on the record of what streets are intended to be paid, so the public knows. We're not going to create this issue, I understand.
We have to list for next week, right?
Well, we should have the list, or wait till we have lists and past ordinance.
See, you can have it next week. I'll have it later this week.
Yeah.
I've got a couple iterations, but in this iteration, I took a look at it, but, basically, what I do is I went overzealous in trying to stretch about, we only have three hundred and fifty thousand street. So, in doing that, it kind of got maybe heavy and a work to, and not as balanced as it should have been, because I want to pay contractors to pay and not drag their stuff around, but it was my fault. I went a little too far with that, trying to capitalize on that. So, I think I'm about to, just go back, we revisit that.
Would anybody be opposed if I, at the end of this meeting, asked for a motion and a second to have a special council meeting to February third?
That's fine.
What's that good?
Matt, so Mr. Devlin?
If you have a special council meeting February third, yes.
One point, I will be out of town at the seminar, so as long as there's six here, then we'll move that forward.
Okay. Now, so do you email that, Doug has, at least has that.
Well, I have some of that.
Thank you.
The motion moved up, the first reading of ordinance number two dash twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right, may I have a motion and a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance three dash?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file in the director's office, and authorizing the mayor on board to control approval to enter into a contract for the complete reconstruction of I and U Avenue Southeast and block those streets southeast to Schneider Street south, including new concrete curbs and gutters, concrete driveway aprons, catch basins, and full-depth asphalt pavement at a total cost not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Fonte.
It's just what it says, but in this case, it's going to be a total review. That's why it's a price here. It's not, it's in the budget we had set aside, so we just do that, we activate money, put my account together. So, I believe that we pass on emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend those councils for three reads?
Spend those.
Do I have a motion and a second to suspend those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. And second, or finally, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance four dash twenty?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file in the director's office, and authorizing the mayor on board to control approval to enter into a contract for the repaving of Cordes Street from Wise Avenue East to Charlotte Street, and from Charlotte to Cordes Streets, east to North Main Street, at a total cost not to exceed six hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Fonte.
Yeah, we talked about this in a meeting the whole last time. Six hundred thirty-seven K, a lot of money, but it's totally getting cleaned up on the orders coming in, so I believe that we pass on emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend those councils for three readings for ordinance four dash?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. And finally, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance five dash?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to request quotes or insurance, including, but not limited to, general liability, personal injury liability, auto liability, building and contents, equipment, including crime, lawyer, and machinery, any environments, errors, and emissions insurance according to specifications on file in the director of administration, and for the mayor to be authorized through board control to enter into a contract, contract for policies and declaring the same an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Fonte.
Pat, last one, did you want to say anything about this?
That's a great question. There's so much to say. I guess at some point, there needs to be an educational process about insurance here so that we can properly obtain the necessary coverage that allows us to move from carrier to carrier. And presently, I feel the, the policies that we have now prevent us from doing that. And I've talked to some of our representatives in Columbus about this, and that it really needs to be something that's addressed on a, on a state level. But, you know, we are required at the moment to get this out because of the dollar size of the contract. It generally is in the hundred and twenty to hundred and fifty thousand range the last several years. But even if we obtain a premium less than what we have now, you, in my professional opinion, having been in this business in a previous life of forty-five years, would be recluded from moving. And it all has to do with the type of policies that you have, and it shouldn't just be, you look at the bottom of the spreadsheet and it says, oh, I got a million dollars worth of coverage and this is a premium. It's the circumstances in which an insurance company will pay on a premium. So, just to give you a little quick color and understanding on dealing with it. So, the best type of commercial insurance is upon what we call an occurrence form. The insurance company pays based on when the claim occurred. Five years from now, we're with a different carrier, and someone presents a claim in the year twenty-twenty-five that says, hey, back in twenty-one, I had this incident occur, but it didn't ever report. The insurance company of record under an occurrence form would be required to honor that claim and defend the city. The next level of coverage down from an occurrence form, an occurrence is the best. Every business practically has a curse based on. The next is called claims made. Claims made policy are, they're cheaper than the occurrence policy. The claims made policy is for when, using that scenario, five years from now, someone makes a claim against the city. The insurance company of record then would pay based on when the claim was made to the city. So, twenty-twenty-five, claim was made to the city, but that incident occurred even though it was in the past. If we had a claims made policy, then that company at that time would pay. We don't have the, so we have what is what I refer to as a claims pay policy. So, as long as we have coverage with our current carrier, any future claim would be paid as long as we're with that carrier. If we were to move, we have, say, an open automobile claim, and we have, um, new injuries that were reported today, and of course, they have, I think, if the law director wrote correctly, in Ohio, up to two years to present a claim against the city. If we were to leave, and a year from now, a person comes back and says, I have a medical injury, and we're not with our current carrier, current carrier is not paying. Carrier today is not paying, the carrier of the future is not paying either. So, it puts the city in a position where they would leave and not have coverage for an open place. There are some circumstances that are available where you can buy insurance coverage for that, but it's limited to a certain period of time, say eighteen months, they call it an extended reporting period, and the premium for that is going to be probably equal to what we're, closer to what we're paying now. So, it's like paying insurance twice, and we're going to be able to leave. My concern to the state legislature is you have requirements that cause us to look and seek for the lowest bid, the lowest best bid. Best is highly subjective in this industry, but certainly, you can see the dilemma that we have with this. And, you know, how we got here, I don't know, but, you know, I'm working the last two times to try to extricate this from us, and I think it's going to require assistance in the form of legislative changes in Columbus to enable other cities like us that really, you know, we're not Cleveland, we don't have a lot of claims. We're pretty good with great law enforcement that does result in a lot of, you know, claims and that kind of thing. So, we should pay a little premium, but we may not be able to get that because we don't necessarily have the best part coming to bid as a result. I know Mr. Schreiber's going out this time as fast about having more people bid, and in this case, you know, we, even if we get a lot, we're handling it in kind of time on this. At some point, this discussion has to take place, because I'm going to have something, and then we're going to report back what we're doing, and if I come to the people surprised at that event, I'm going to, we're able to somehow get out of this in a better situation. We need to make sure that whoever the stewards of the city are at that time, they have an understanding of what to avoid. But I would, I would like you to proceed with this and give us the emergency while gone.
Okay. Well, thank you for all of that information, you're a bit. Well, thank you for all of that information, it's really good. Any other questions? Okay. Um, I'm going to jump out.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries, and a motion and a second to suspend those accounts for three weeks.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, and finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Reports, Deputy Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzetta. I am pleased to announce the engineering office construction is complete. So phase one of the engineering staff, moving engineering staff has begun. We've gotten a couple, folks up there, one fully replacing administrative assistants. They are getting some calls, got their computer lights. Phase two is happening this week. Big steps moved up, and then we will effectively use our goal of consolidating city services into one location. So we'll do more of an announcement out on that via our social media channels. Also, just wanted to mention, if you saw in the Canton repository today, there was an article that we are now accepting photographs of all veterans. This is for a project that we're working on with Hoover High School's Video Production Department, creating a video for a war day celebration. It's for any veterans, living or deceased, city resident or not, and huge response. I think we had over fifteen individuals show up with multiple pictures. So it seems like it's a really great response from the community, and we always want to do as much as we can to recognize the veterans.
Kathy, on that subject, I always want them to get that to you, I always ask that.
Yes, in the article in the newspaper, it did say that, you know, they can't send it to us electronically, but some people, you know, because we're thinking of scanning them, but a lot of people, you know, don't have that ability or don't know how to, so they've been just coming. They've been coming to us. It's interesting, some say, just keep the picture. Really? What's your plan? All works, basically, we have plenty. Others, we scan it, and we'll take their picture, scan their, because in the article, it also did note that we would like to have the sign of a waiver to, to be able to use the photograph, and they can either download that, print that, sign it, write it to us, or just come on and they can sign it there. Thanks to Jessica for a great article. And that's all.
Thank you. Director of Administration.
I had three things, and then I thought of two other things, and I thought I had to write those down, and then I wrote the two down, and I forgot the third. So if it comes to me, I'm just going to ask, but I don't have some analysis, but.
I wanted to alert you to that on January thirty-first, which I believe is Friday, Marty Van Gundy, who's our Chief Building Inspector, is the featured speaker at the DIA luncheon. He is lecturing, giving a course on residential code changes, and it's not, doesn't have specifically to do with a campaign, it's just statewide, but he's recognized as, you know, one of the leading authorities out there, so all the building departments are looking, would be there to hear that, and this tradespeople. We feel that we've really done a lot to repair that relationship with the trades, and invited them, Arden, the safety department, to be in some of their showcases, to work some of the festivals, and, and done a lot. We reached out to some of those trades groups to ask them for some help on interpretive, some of the, uh, things that we're, we're here, we hear, we go out in the field to do inspections, and we're trying to assess accuracy, some of the, the lines that were given as to how things are developing on particular projects, it's very helpful. Also, then, I will send you an email for a met that I would like as many of you to attend as possible. On February the twenty-ninth, it's a Saturday, there is a governmental law seminar being held at the Sipho Lake Park Lodge. It's held every year, I have gone to it, Catherine has gone to it, I've taken all my staff to it at some point, so I'm asking our department heads, Director of Law, Council Clerk, I want counsel there to go as well. There's about three different seminars that happen currently. There's three subjects in each of the seminars, and some of them pertain to, things of interest would be zoning, nuisance of victims, of course, you know, open meetings, sunshine laws, and a whole number of things. Mayor is gone, I'm gone, I think it would be great if we had a contingency of council representatives to go, but it's, it's very informative, it's not as dry as it sounds, lunch is provided, but if you let me know that you'd be interested in going, I'd like you to attend.
Is it free?
No, the cost is twenty-five dollars to go.
We deserve a space, aren't we?
Uh, this is one of those continuing education opportunities that, that we have budgeted for, for our departments, and council has, uh, budgeted, funded for continuing education.
See the mayor reach his first wall, it's even.
He's a citizen, he has a car. For snacks.
I think he's lucky.
Thank you, Kathy. Did you remember?
No, I didn't.
I'll come back to it. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, just a couple points, not only deals by time, Mr. Egor, just wanted to bring your attention again, Chief John Van Gundy retired last Friday after thirty-one years, and we wished him well, had a nice reception for him upstairs in the, in the administration office. We did swear in Chief Frank Kemp Jr., and that was a comment at the end, also for the retirement, for Chief Menon, and also for his family, health issues, all those problems. We're going to a ceremonial swearing in, so the council will have an opportunity to meet him. That'll be on February the tenth at six-thirty, so if any of you come early for the swearing in, a ceremonial will take place at that time. Very excited for the young man to assume the role as Chief of Police. I have a lot of confidence in him, that he will perform well for us, and continue to provide the safest, secure city for us. That's really all I have at this time.
Thank you. We are a good answer, Chief Kemp. All right, I'm going to do things a little different, I'm going to do that, and all the department heads, and then we'll come back to council. Is that all right now?
Yes.
Okay. Director of Law?
Uh, sure. Um, no, 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 that's fine. Earlier this evening, in a sweet way, I was told something that I think is commonplace in, in my trade, that if you say a lawyer is loquacious, they like to talk, is considered redundant. So if you open up a subject, and it's something that I'm passionate about, something such as defending a energetic, highly motivated, devoted employee, I might drag on about that. In, in that, also, we just agree as well, I think Chief Van Gundy did a terrific job, and as well, we made great hands with our, our new chief, and all the goodwill and best intentions for our business to be successful.
Thank you. Finance Director Alabac?
I have another part for you tonight. So we have like three things, and I'll cover it for you soon.
Thank you very much. Engineer Graham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for legislation we have tonight. The Ivy Project will be in the paper this Thursday, and we'll open bids on that on Valentine's Day, Friday, February fourteenth. Also advertising the carryover Northfield project, the sanitary sewer replacement, road reconstruction. We had it for nineteen, passed a bidding legislation in nineteen, didn't get it out there in nineteen, just going to advertise Thursday as well, and also open on Valentine's Day. Get those two out, hit the ground running, and then as we talk, we'll be taping to you later this week. And then the four to repaving, thank you for that legislation. The next up, the fact, because it's family fun, it has to go down, they've put a TV goal on it.
They got away.
The disadvantaged business enterprise goal, DBE goal. So, but as soon as they give me the okay, we'll get that on the street. Try to save as much money as we can, and I give the project to you.
Good work, thank you, Rob. Last but not least, interim Councilor Ben Young?
President Collins' office would like to extend an invitation to council, and really the whole community, to participate in their open forums for their new university vision. His office has not yet set the final date, something will occur, but we'll get those to council, and see what they have.
Thank you, sir. Member of all?
Thank you, Mr. President. Really admonishing of making reports. I'd like to say that I appreciate the role that Chuck has played, and other citizens have played over the years, and expressing their views in our public space. And I will say, Chuck, that you've been consistent over the years. I am absolutely astonished by your ability to ignore inconvenient facts that would contradict your often eloquent arguments. I think we have two examples tonight. The first is you asked, why did two employees resign? I think you know why they resigned, and we're not going to have this discussion in this, in this forum, but I think you know. The second is that, uh, I'm sure you probably have a copy of Mrs. Freeman's job description, and I've got reasonable confidence that includes the phrase, "other duties as required." It's pretty common. You have made a big deal over her salary, and I would submit to you that many of the problems that we've faced in this community over the last years is because we have had My position is this, we're going to hire the best people, we're going to pay them a competitive wage, and we're going to evaluate them on their ability to perform those other duties as prescribed. And if they can't, then we'll remove them. But the fact of the matter is, when I look back at the performance of the individual in question over the last year, certainly since the last four months, I would argue that we've made giant leaps in our HR activities here. And I think it would be fair of you to acknowledge that performance. So that is my report.
Remember that one. Member Fonte?
I'd like to say congratulations to Chief Manon, who's a retirement, hardworking man, kept it safe, and also Frank, I haven't had a chance to see him, but congratulations to Frank Kemp, new chief. I also want to say, Ben, thanks for doing this report for me. I have some of the latest golf course stats and information we're going to talk about in the near future, because I was trying to understand about the shift in the golf market compared to what it used to be for the baby boomers and all that, you know, sort of the change. So anyhow, we'll share that, talk a bit more about that in the near future, and when we have that, we'll talk about golf. That's all, yeah, thank you.
Before I turn it over this way, I guess I didn't realize there was such clamoring for me to talk more, but I, I will say a few words regards to Larry's comments. And I'm not going to be as open as my agenda, and I assure you, if I do, for fair, and I'm right, in the email exchange that we had there, you indicated that you, one, need to speak more about what is going on, or two, or whatever. Fact of the matter is, the two, the two big elephants in the room are the Hoover District, which I have no report on there until we hear back from the EPA. The pool, it's winter time, it's closed, and the school resides in Ward Two. I'll make my feelings very clear on, on the happenings and what's going on, with what they're asking the community to do. So, uh, I, I, I don't understand, I, I think there's anger and frustration, I don't know where, where it comes from, be that as it may, I will defend to the very end, if you're all right to criticize me, you can call me anything you want, as long as you do it within five minutes, the same rules apply to everybody. You didn't fight, and your predecessor, predecessor didn't fight and die, so somebody else could get more time than the other, or get preferential treatment because they screamed louder. Everyone plays by the same rules, five minutes. And to a missed rules point, I, I agree, and I had an email exchange with this Ed Field as well, yeah, Ben is our intern, Councilor, is also an intern, and the last email exchange that we had, by his signature, it, it said that, so, you know. We're playing with it to see how we can maximize the taxpayers' dollar, and also get the job done. Now, Patrick has put together, or proposed, a hybrid position where two or three days a week, this person would serve council, and a couple days a week, serve administration, and go back and forth very as needed. Darrell and I had a conversation earlier today, we're very cognizant, very aware of the separation of powers, so we talked about direct reporting, you know, who's that person going to direct report to? So I'm assuming there's probably going to be a hybrid, and I haven't mentioned this to Finance Director Alabac yet, but being that council is a, a part-time body, and somebody in the office, that, that could be a direct report, I think that would be probably the best option for council, for, for the work that he does for us, and then obviously, he's going to direct report, you know, he's doing administration's work to that. So, yeah, so that's, I, I agree with you. This is one of the things, too, we've, we've talked about Darrell as well, one of the things that we talked about, we don't have a job description for him, and I think it's important that we put together, even with a hybrid position, what those, what we as council are going to require of him, and he's done some things with, what he's did for Don is a prime example, his doing good work. So we just need to make sure the framework is proper, and I appreciate all your comments on that, and Patrick, give up.
May I add, in your comments, just for clarification purposes, you mentioned about administration's work, and what we'd like to acquire, and just to refresh everybody's memory on that, the seven of you, up to this point, would call me, with, I use this thing on golf, I need you to contact Worcester to talk about this, I can learn about it. I need you, but this, 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 this would all flow into administration, because you didn't have a position available, or someone in that position that you would have snapped. That slows the administration down from the mayor's agenda, what we're trying to accomplish, and to your extent, that you're aware of all these things, these are agendas that the mayor's, the city's cause, I'm not saying that that doesn't, but it's like eight masters that we're having to serve. So the fact that we would have someone available, you say, administrative work, if council would want something, and instead of calling me, you have the ability to, that call to be directed to Ben, and to do work that serves me, that helps the administration, because in case of a burden off of us, to provide that documentation of things that you want. So I don't want it to make it sound like it's, okay, three days a week, you're going to tell me what to do, two other days, I'm telling you what to do. The fact that he's doing things that really a clerk should do in this day and age, solves tremendous problems for, for me, so.
I'm glad you said that, because that really does happen, and I was trying, yes, not so well. Well, let me provide another example of how we envision this new function unfolding. Last week, we just, we just.
Last week, uh, we just, we discussed briefly a meeting with Walsh's president. Now, the fact of that is Walsh is our largest employer, who's a very important corporate citizen in our community. Within days, Ben had a meeting set up with president. We have things to discuss with and an agenda. And that matter got taken care of and that's, I think, the role of the clerk. It's easier for that clerk to curmudgeon a couple of different schedules and get all pulled together, a couple of members of council who can make that meeting, Ben took care of it. And, uh, you know, for those, for those members of council who are working, uh, during the day, that's an indispensable service. A clerk can fulfill and should fulfill. And I am absolutely confident that he will have us pretty legit that for that meeting. So the president knows what we're there to discuss.
And I'm glad you, you spoke up, it brought, it reminded me of another point I wanted to, uh, address with Mr. Tripp as well. One of the, you know, and Dominic and Tim both highlighted what I had mentioned to you in our email exchange. The, the majority of their time was spent thanking Chief Menop for his service and welcoming Chief Kemp in and just carrying that on down the line. That's redundant, in my opinion, a waste of time. I already talked to John, thanked him personally, and I would do the same thing with Frank, uh, incoming, uh, chief Frank Kemp. So I, I don't need to use my time, um, in reports to, uh, to do that. And also, for example, when Rob talks about, uh, road, uh, construction, uh, projects that go on and I, I think back on, as mentioned, what happens in Warman Ward Two, the reconstruction of Weber and Brier, there was a lot of discussion during his report where I would ask questions and the public, either here or online, were watching the discussion happen in real time. Pro, Pro is telling me what's going on, I'm asking questions that I don't understand. You guys have the ability to ask him the same questions as well, so, um, all right. I, I don't know what it is or where it's rooted, I just, I think there is some animosity. I hope we can get beyond that, but, uh, I guess that's, that's all I have to say. So I heard that more than your expectations. Member Folt.
Thank you. Sam Brith left a message, I did not catch all of it. I think if I could charge administration to look down Everheart Road towards the south, towards Delman Village, I imagine the west side, um, of some dangerous land, a railway, I don't, like I said, just reporting versus, these are serious situations and Sam sees something, you know, he, he has some, you know, the, the community's bits that are just apart, so there's been a lot going on with trees falling. They're out there, um, anywhere, anywhere. So just checking out, see if there's any till or if we have to charge a resident.
I'll drop it.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Member Mayor.
I had a nice meeting this week with, um, Mayor Wilder and a couple constituents. So thank you for meeting, um, with those constituents who were kind of talking about some deer issues and, um, they had, kind of done some research and it was, it was helpful for both of us and they were to the point and I'm, and, and, but so thank you for, um, doing that. And, um, just to address to you, I just think I want to remind everyone that our public speech policy is one of the most liberal in the county, allow them for five minutes. You are in Kit City, you have three minutes and it has to be a topic. So probably none of what Mr. Tripp said tonight would have been allowed and that's fine. Mr. Tripp also has all of our phone numbers and you can call any one of us at any time and talk to us about any of those topics. So I think that we're really fortunate, I guess, I think if yours is in North Camp, to be able to start helping speaks for those five minutes and, and really talk about anything you want. So, thank you.
Members for our end.
Uh, thank you, Melanie, Larry and Chuck for speaking. Uh, thank you guys for attending. Patrick, the twenty-ninth on the end, we got a brochure that's going to ask you about it myself. Forgot about our phone here, I'm going to have to.
Very good, thank you.
I wore orange to support, uh, the K three tower, twelve facilities meeting. Obviously we can't attend that, it's southern hot tonight, so I hope that was very well attended and I hope they're pushing the information out. That's it.
Maybe some real, real time updates. All right, that's it. Members for our end.
I had a whole list of stuff, but you use it on time. I don't, I don't, I just want, one thing I want to say is, uh, I'll sort of keep that up, you grew up here, couple of years behind us, very proud of what we've accomplished here in this town and I'm sure the next person of the community who better, John, or a colleague is, yeah, so, that's all, I'm done.
Okay. All right, that concludes our report, so I need, um, I'm going to be using three separate ones. I'm going to need a motion and a second for a special council meeting following committee of whole on February third, um, for the consideration of ordinance two dash twenty-two. Thank you. So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Motion carries afterwards. Okay, then also the, a motion and a second to sched, to schedule a special committee of whole meeting immediately following the regularly scheduled council meeting February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. This is to discuss housing council recommendations. So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, motion carries. And then finally, motion and a second to schedule a special city council meeting immediately following the regularly scheduled committee of whole meeting March second, two thousand and twenty, to consider action regarding housing council recommendations. So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Interim Clerk Young, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. He's sharp, isn't he? Yes, he is. Uh, final call for new business, council. Seena, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Motion carries. Thank you.